I'll call the meeting to order of the March 13th, 2018 Village Board Meeting. I would like to just let everybody know that trustee Grundon is sick with the flu and about her fifth day, she said, so she wouldn't be, she will not be here. I ask the board to call the board, please.
Trustee Bingham.
Mr. President.
Trustee Duncan.
Here.
Trustee Grundon is absent. Trustee Martinson.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
And trustee Saylor.
Here. Okay. We'll have the budgets in a moment. Silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Pleased to be seated. Okay. Chairman, entertain a motion without objection. I'd like to approve both Village Board meeting minutes from February 13th.
Veto.
And we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee, motion by trustee Duncan, second by trustee Mitchell to approve the 4:30 meeting and the 7:00 p.m. meeting from February 13th. Any discussion? Hearing no request, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Do we have any public comments out there? Mr. Martinson, you don't wish to speak today?
No.
Okay. Under the president's report, I don't really have anything. I have some correspondence, but I'll read that later when we get on down. I will move into committee reports. And trustee Martinson, if you're new to the airport, please.
The airport commission met on February 1st. They did have an update regarding removal of the trees, and that project has now been completed. And airport manager Sickler provided an update on the status of development projects in planning and design phases. And he also provided an update on the status of hiring of a part-time seasonal employee. They did consider an amendment to the airport budget to provide for reimbursement to the city for the city's hiring of a part-time seasonal airport employee. And the employee would be paid $10 per hour for a maximum of 20 hours per week for a maximum of 25 weeks. So that will be taken up, and apparently they will be hiring somebody. They did discuss some other business regarding, Sickler presented a draft fuel discount program, and that would be a more flexible program allowing for negotiation of volumes and markups. Also, a penalty rather than deposit was proposed. While their preference was not to be administratively tracked deposits, it was discussed that a penalty could be inserted in the agreement. It may accomplish the same thing without the administrative burden. That pretty much takes care of the old business. The new business, they did discuss capital investments. And other than that, I think that that was about it with the meeting. So I will make a motion to approve minutes of the airport commission.
Second.
Motion by trustee Martinson, second by trustee Duncan to approve the minutes of the airport commission. Any discussion? I would just have one. Do they say anything in there about their investments? What that's about or anything or at all?
They did talk about some projects that they had discussed. Do you want me to go into that?
No, I remember now.
Okay.
And then I would like to ask the board, or remind the board, that the airport manager, Jeremy Sickler, said that he, as these developments keep going at the airport, if you are interested, all we have to do is let him know what meeting we would like him to be at, and he will come and fill the seat. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Going to the Cert Committee, trustee Bingham, or chairman Bingham.
Okay. Sorry, I was looking at the next meeting. The, we met on February 20th, 2018. Officer Radke and the co-presidents of the Port Edwards Law Enforcement Club have held fundraisers, and with some of those proceeds, they would like to purchase and donate some park equipment to the Abbey and Alexander Park locations. And we greatly appreciate that and look forward to that opportunity and working with our street superintendent when that time comes. There were no public chairman comments at that time. We did review the splash pad survey questions. Since that meeting, Eric Saylor has put it on our website. That will be in the newsletter. That information is well done. Thank you, Eric. And the paper copies are, will be available at the April 3 election site. So we'll be getting some advice by, what do they call those? Non-advisory or?
Non-binding.
Non-binding responses, but it should be interesting and see where we go forward at this particular time. Upgrade outplanting in the cemetery. Scott Perryton is going to have the village attorney draw the lease and make sure that fertilizers and chemicals, any chemicals that fertilizers use will not be used near the village wells as per, as per ordinance, as per agreement. Dell Stewart's in the process of getting bids for a new one-time truck. In fact, we'll have those available at the next meeting, Mr. Stewart tells me. I guess I'll just go back. Peter Apps, have you received, is that in the works, that lease on that property or?
Bid is in the works. I've, the lease substantially completed. There are a few pieces of information that I'm waiting for from Scott, but once I have those, it'd be a matter of a day or two to finish it up.
Okay, thanks.
You'll send it to chairman Bingham then for his review?
Yes.
Sure. And correspondence received? There was none. One of the agenda items for the next meeting will be summer help, and I think, my memory, somebody helped me, did we send something to the schools already? Any, Diane, do you, I mean, do you remember?
I probably don't.
Yeah, I think that was going to be done right away, but for some reason it escapes me whether, I thought it was happening right away. We've got two of three returning that are committed for the summer, so we're looking basically for one. And that notice will be put at the Port Edward School. The next meeting is March 20th, 2018. We adjourned at 5:40. I move to approve the minutes as read.
Second.
Motion by chairman Bingham, second by trustee Duncan to approve the minutes of the previous Cert Committee meeting. Is there any discussion? I just had, I would like to make one comment. I did remind the interim administrator, and he kind of forgot, but to get moving on our, our full-time employee for the DPW, hopefully that'll be starting to move along. So.
That didn't come up, and I'm trying to remember if Scott was going to, he was supposed to.
Okay, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr.
You're absolutely right.
Okay, I, yeah.
So. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. The pit committee, chairman Martinson.
The pit committee met on February 27th, and we discussed the short-term rental ordinance. The status of that right now, it is still being worked on. It has not been finalized. We did have an individual, we had a few individuals that did attend the meeting from out of the Lakes area, and we had a good discussion. And there was also provided to the committee a copy of the ordinance for the Town of Rome. And that would give, one of the residents asked if we would at least review that and see if we wanted to incorporate some of that language into the ordinance for the village of Port Edwards. So at this point, Laura Lai is still working on that, and she's the individual that's been helping us with the rezoning and the new maps and so on and so forth. And that will be going to review by attorney Apps after this, and you do have it in your hand?
Yes, if I may.
Sure.
I do have that in my hands. I actually forwarded some, returned it to Laura Lai with some comments today. So it should be finalized, I would think, within the next couple of days here, in time for the meeting at which it's going to be discussed.
Okay.
That would be your pit meeting on 27th?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And that is what we have told the individuals that attended the meeting, that they could certainly come to that meeting at the end of this month, and we can review that and hopefully move on. We had some discussion with, regarding the village website. Trustee Saylor has been kind of looking, I want to say over the shoulder of Kim Holcomb, and she's been doing a great job. And trustee Saylor said if there's any additional help that is needed, he's happy to provide Purchase of iPads and Chromebooks for the board members. Trustee Saylor gave the information for the Acer I, excuse me, Acer R13 Chromebooks and to Diane, and they were going to be ordered. They have those actually.
The area.
The area, okay. So we will have a time set up for, set up, and we will be trained on those as well. There was no correspondence received, and other than that, that's about it. The meeting was adjourned at 5:45, and the next meeting will be March 27th at 5:00 p.m. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the Planning Property and Information Technology meeting.
Second.
Motion by chairman Martinson, second by trustee Duncan to approve the minutes of the recent pit committee meeting on February 27th. Any discussion?
Can I ask why we need a short-term rental ordinance?
What's happened is, if I may.
Oh.
We've, we've, the village has been approached by a number of individuals that live out in the Necco Lake area property, and there has been some problems with individuals owning property and renting it out. And of course, once you start doing that, it's considered a business. And they're very concerned about short-term rentals, and right now we have no ordinance that would address that situation. So that's why we've been asked to move forward to provide an ordinance that would protect not only the renter, but the individuals that live out there currently and the individuals that are renting the property.
State law will not allow us to have anything, you know, to limit or to regulate seven days or more, but six days and less, we can set parameters, and this is the time. And the reason being, a lot of communities have done this, like Town of Rome. People have run out their houses and that for weekend parties, I mean, they usually end up being parties.
Yeah, I understand. And, and, I don't know, I guess the problem I have is, is that the landowner is ultimately responsible, so the landowner rents out to an idiot, then they're responsible for putting idiots in place, and they should be the ones reprimanded for it. And given work, or given violations, disorderly conduct, ordinance violations, et cetera, et cetera. I just, I'd like to see it, but I just have a real problem with the concept of telling people how they can or can't use the property they own.
Well, the one thing I like to.
To this extent.
Correct me if I'm wrong, madam chair, is, the part I really like about, of limiting that and regulating the less than seven days is that you have, if a person like the owner now lives over 100 miles away from the property, we can make them have a property manager or somebody that we can call when we do have these problems?
I understand that logic again, and I have no problem with the landowner being held liable as being an idiot for stupidity of being 100 miles away and renting out to people that they don't know. But again, and I understand, I mean, this is not, seven days is not a big deal, because if somebody's going to rent it out, you rent it out basically from Monday to Monday, and there's nothing anybody can do anyway. So I, I think it's a lot of, to quote one William Shakespeare, "What you do about nothing."
I did take much Shakespeare in, in school, so we'll move on. Is there any more comments?
No.
Okay. So we have the motion, we have the second, to approve the minutes of the February 27th meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Public safety, chairman Mitchell.
Yes, and first of all, I would thank trustee Grundon, if she were here. She led the meeting in my absence, so I was glad she was able to do that. There were no public comments, nor chairman's comments. Chief Iverson presented the monthly report. She also commented on the part-timers, and would you like to do that for all of us?
Both of our part-timers have currently started, and there's a training phase right now.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, and the renovation is complete, which I saw this morning, and they're looking for a way to announce, for people to announce themselves, I think, to, if they aren't, or don't do it by phone, there'll be a bell or something, I'm not sure what that's going to be yet, when they walk into the outer lobby area. Fire department, chief Arndt gave his monthly report. He also presented a final bid for the new fire truck. And with that said, I will move that we accept the bid from W.S. Darley and Company for $543,397 to purchase the new fire truck.
Motion by chairman Mitchell. Do I have a second?
I'll start.
And the second by trustee Saylor to approve the purchase of W.S. Darley and Company for, fire truck for $543,397. Is there any discussion on this matter? Trustee Martinson.
I would like to make a motion that we table this decision at this time, based on the fact that I feel that we really.
We have to have a second.
Oh.
Is there a second to this motion?
I have a second.
Pardon? Motion to table.
Oh, motion to table. Oh, you're looking for what?
A second to the motion so we can discuss.
I'll second.
To the wind, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion by chairman Martinson, and a second by trustee Bingham to table this motion. Is there any discussion?
I guess to explain the reason why I feel that we should table this, I think that we should go back to the fiscal budget and have it reviewed with the administrator and spend some time, I guess, looking at this again before we move forward. It's a lot of money to spend, and I just think that it's necessary to review it.
I have another kind of comment too, and I'm thinking that we need to be making these decisions when we're talking about the budget. So, you know, I see this, I mean, I understand why it's coming forward now, but I think in the future, we need to be looking at these kinds of, because we knew about this when we were working on the budget. So I would like to see it brought forward, discussed, put on, put in the budget, not put in the budget, in the future.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I understand both perspectives.
It's hard to plan.
Yeah, a budget is a plan, and plans do, and I'm not saying this will change, but plans are open to change. Through my own fault, I need to know more about the number of trucks, what the disposal, you know, and that's my fault that I don't know that. I, I take that on, but I'm not, at half a million dollars, I'm a little uncomfortable at this time, and that's why I supported the table. Not that I'm against it, I'm just, I need more information.
My understanding is, is that we buy a new truck every other year?
Every 10 years.
Every 10 years, et cetera.
Right, right.
Yeah, and we plan this way in advance, and it's kind of like, it's been a practice. If, by delaying that, let me just ask this, if I delay it a month, is there going to be a problem in getting delivery on time or any problem?
No, it takes a year. It takes one year from the date of order. The only problem is, is Darley, they're holding this price because those chassis go up, and that's the main cost. Where that cost came from was the chassis, and so this price wouldn't be after tonight. I can't say it's going to be guaranteed at $543,937. It may go up, it may go down, I can't tell you that. That's up to them.
And the truck's going to replace a 30-year-old truck. Pardon? And the truck is replacing a truck that's 30 years old, so that's just.
And is there anything?
And it's debt, it's debt, by the way, it's not.
Yeah, and is it, is the old truck that we're getting rid of, has that already been sold or offered?
No, no, no. If we turned around and tried to sell that truck today on auction, you're looking anywhere between $2,000 and $4,000 that we're going to get for it. That's what you're going to get for it.
Oh.
It's 30 years old. This does affect the ISO rating, all of our insurance, and that's, it's, I understand 500, that's a lot of money, but that $200,000 increase from 2006, when we got the other truck, is all chassis and emissions, because now we have all this emissions stuff, so.
Yeah, and I understand the arguments, because spending that kind of money for something you don't live in is a little bit of a chock.
Sue, you're.
Well, I was just going to comment, I guess I'd like to know what the plans will be for the purchase of the truck, too. I mean, that's why I'd really like to see that forecasted out, since it's a known expense, and you've known it for some time.
Well, I forgot my gavel, so in order to speak, I have to pass proverbial gavel, and I will direct that to trustee Duncan. So if I may speak.
You may.
I had two calls on it from residents, and one, this lady asked me how we were going to pay for it, and I explained that it's usually on a 10-year note, and we had just paid off the one from last year. And she says, well, asked me quite a bit about the pricing and kind of like what trustee Bingham just alluded to, and I couldn't give her the answers. And she said that, I'm not saying we don't need a fire truck, but she's saying, are you sure at this time is a good time to buy? And she also brought up, she said, what's the status on the detached area on the east side? When is that coming back? And Diane, I think it's 2023 is when everything's supposed to be.
The end of 2023.
End of 2023. And she said, is there a guarantee it's coming back? And I said, well, there's no guarantees, and also the, not a whole lot of case history and statute on detached areas. And I explained that generally detachment isn't from an incorporated municipality or township, it's usually in reverse. And she said, well, it would probably make sense that you don't build an east side fire station until you know whether the property's coming back. So, and the second thing, I had another, a band called me, so I had one of each gender, and he said, you know, through, don't fault of anybody's, but our roads, and there's some pretty well-traveled streets in the village that some of that money could be put towards. And I told him, yeah, and I said, in the past two years, they have been doing the seal coating, you know, and the other stuff, but he said, well, look at Verbunker Avenue. He said, that's not from a plow or anything. He said, that is water coming up through the street. And I couldn't deny that, because when I take walks, you know, on a summer day, or especially a later spring day, water will come up where they've already, took cracks, what do they call that, Dell?
Crack filling.
Crack filling. Pretty simple. But anyway, I guess I only vote to break ties, but we're not going to have a tie tonight unless somebody votes yes or no. But anyway, I kind of favor taking a little bit of a step backwards and getting some hard figures. And I, you know, yes, we talked about it in the budget and everything like that, but I guess it comes down to how we're going to pay for it. I mean, there's a few more questions I would like answered. Yes, or I'm sorry, you got Dana.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. I guess my, my comment would be, then when we're looking at next year's budget, and I'm assuming we've also known that the streets need to be repaired for some time too early, I, there've been comments now for several years, I would say, that they're in need of repair. So what we're saying is, there isn't enough money there then to do the street repairs.
If I may.
Yes.
For what we plan on doing this year, yes, the money is apportioned. It's there, right, Janet?
Correct.
We got it.
Correct, Mr. President.
But to do both, no. And major speed, I'll take Verbunker Avenue, for instance. To really do in Dell, correct me if I'm wrong, seal coating is going to be a Band-Aid and a problem again.
And actually, I mean, I understand all of that, so there's not money to do major.
Correct.
It's what you're saying.
To get it, to really look at the road base and everything, what is a Dell standard when you remove the top inch and a half?
Yes.
To, to.
Well, you grind an inch and a half off, then you put another inch and a half back on.
Okay. But we did not, oh, I'm sorry, Sue.
No.
We did not budget. We did budget to do the seal coat on Verbunker, but this year, the winter took more toll on it than what their seal coat is actually, should do. So we put X amount of dollars in there, I believe it was 40-some thousand dollars to seal coat for Bunker. That is not going to cover to grind off an inch and a half and put another inch and a half of new blacktop on top. There's no way that that's going to cover that. And what that costs, yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head.
And so the reason I mention that is, is we're still talking about the fire truck or, you know.
No.
I'm not saying don't buy a fire truck, I'm saying, I think we need.
To look at more details.
Yes.
I can see.
So that's all I have to say, and can I have my proverbial gavel back, sir?
You can have your proverbial gavel, I think, when you want it.
So, any more discussion? Yes, Dana.
Well.
Chief, I'll get to you in a minute.
All right. I'll vote to table, just for the informational purpose, the only thing I can say is, is that if we're making decisions on having a fire department, and having a police department, and having these particular things, we have to bite the bullet sometimes to do what's necessary to make them properly tool and functional. And I can't imagine that a 30-year-old fire truck is not going to be a problem if we don't replace it here pretty soon. So I'll agree for now, but.
There's no, there's no doubt. Here's my gavel pack. But the thing is, this lady said, you know, sometimes if something goes wrong in the fire truck, or you got a leaky tank, you know, it's cheaper to replace a tank or a pump on an old truck than it is to buy a new one. It's not going to cost $535,000 to replace a tank. Chief, it's okay.
All I was wondering is, you know, can I get a timeline, if you need to come down and see the equipment, see what we're doing? Because that way I can kind of give Darley an information on what to expect from us. I do have a meeting coming up next week on the east side. So that's a big thing, because that truck, the old truck, was supposed to be moved over there, trying to get their ISO rating down, and this.
We have, we have two opportunities, excuse me for interrupting. We have the public safety meeting coming up, I believe, on the 22nd. We also have FHA coming up in early April, the 5th, I believe, no, 8th. So it's going to be hard to crunch a lot of numbers. Hopefully, we can get them in, you know, for the, the public safety committee, what John's looking for, what I brought up and whatnot. And we always could basically put it on both agendas, but if we're satisfied, you know, after public safety, we could all scratch it from here. So there's two opportunities, Eric.
We've been planning for that truck for two, three, four months, since, since end of December or something. And that, that information's available. You know, we've, I've been, just so happen to be.
You know, we've, I've been, just so happened to be, because of people being gone on vacations and stuff like that, I've been sitting in on the public safety meetings for the last two months, and then those plans were there. I know I scanned them in and submitted them with the, with the minutes, and all the, all the numbers were there, everything was there. The bidding, every 30 years has been going on since the inception of Fire Room. So, I mean, nothing is new information. So, I just want that on the record, that the information's been available, and now if we push it out another month or two months, just expect that price to go up.
Well, I think some of the economists, too, is they want to know if this $535 is permanent or is there some other things? I know I talked to Chief, he said it's pretty standard edition, there's no bells and whistles about it. But I, I just think that we should have that discussion, personally.
Stuff has been a little, some would be a little.
I'm just going to say, I think it's in last minute, last month's minutes, is the sheet that has all the information on it.
The equipment chief?
Yes.
The class owner, equipment chief, or the class owner?
I think they were talking about what they were ordering.
All I've ever seen was just a poll.
And, yeah, I don't know, I didn't, I was, otherwise I'm occupied at the last minute of the meeting, but I knew this was coming down the pike early last fall, so.
Any other discussion? We have a motion by Chairman Martinson, a second by trustee Duncan to table, trustee Bingham, I'm sorry, for, until, I guess it would be until next board meeting, at, you know, before we be able to approve this. So, that's the basis that, and so, having heard that, all those that are in favor of the table will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that's three to two. So, Sue, I would ask you to get that on your agenda for the 22nd, and I highly encourage the other board members, you know, to, to be there, so you can hear the discussion. Okay, and then there's no need the, for the motion of purchase. Still your show, Sue.
Approve the minutes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, trustee Duncan. I move to approve the February 25th minutes for the public safety committee.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Mitchell, second by trustee Duncan, approve the minutes of the public safety committee. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. And FHR, Finance and Human Resources, Chairman Martinson.
The FHR meeting was held on March 8th, and we discussed the, and reviewed the monthly bills, journal entries, and financial reports, and at this time, I'll make a motion to approve payment on the bills.
Second. Motion by, motion by Chairman Martinson to, and second by trustee Bingham to approve payment of the bills from previous month. All those in favor, call any discussion.
Just make my own little statement, that I read through every line, so.
Thank you, sir. I hit the highlights.
I have nothing better to pair with.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
And I'll also make a motion to approve the journal entries of the previous month.
Second. Motion by trustee Martinson, Chairman Martinson, second by trustee Bingham to approve the journal entries of the previous month. Discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
At that same meeting, we did discuss the state offering tax credits on capital gains. Mr. Scott Harrington talked about the program that is available, and at least a portion of the village would be considered an opportunity zone, so Mr. Harrington will be submitting an application, which will be due by Monday, March, which was due by Monday, March 12th. So, that application was to be submitted.
And it was.
Okay, it was. And we also discussed the review of the contract for hiring of an administrator, and at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the contract as presented for the hiring of the new administrator.
Second. Well, we have multiples?
Motion by Chairman Martinson, second by trustee Mitchell, to approve the hiring of Michael Corman as the next village administrator. Is there any discussion? Harry, not all those in favor?
Aye.
Barry, sir, do you have anything?
I guess I can, if there's any questions about the contract, I can answer them. We went through it pretty thoroughly in the FHR meeting.
I read it.
Attorneys do that, don't they?
We do, mostly, again, because we have nothing better to do.
Okay. If you've got any further discussion, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that motion carries. So, Michael Corman, currently at Webster, Wisconsin, will be our next village administrator. And I was asked to forward the following after the vote by Scott, if I can find it.
Do you need a magnifying glass?
Trustee Duncan, like I said, you're on your A-game tonight. Okay, so, good, and hopefully that, if you don't know, Mike will be here the 27th and 28th. He has his house up for sale up in Webster, and he plans on moving into the village for a while. Okay? Sorry, ma'am.
At this time, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the committee meeting.
Second. Motion by Chairman Martinson, second by trustee Bingham to approve the minutes of the FHR committee discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Under unfinished business, Eric, is there anything you want to say on those Chromebooks at this point, or as far as, we're going to get, probably get together for a training session with you?
I have to get them at some point, I'll set them up, and then I'll figure out, I can't see where they were.
That sounds good to me, so maybe when that date comes out, we're going to have some training on them, we can just send out an email and get together what dates, the best to do it. New business. Report from Clerk Treasure.
Nothing.
I have a letter from a lady that lives on Levine Avenue about her displeasure with the garbage and recycle pickup. She said on the dates of February 14th and February 50th, two different occasions, a truck went by her garbage and her recycles, and just kept driving by them. And I said, well, if you're on Levine, I thought the pickup was off the alley, but Dell, is it off the street?
The ordinance reads that if you have an alleyway, if your property is on an alleyway, you have to take the garbage to the alleyway. That's the ordinance reads.
Okay, so then she was wrong. She told me that, she was told it was the street, but I did think it was the alleyway, so.
That's sweet.
I will get back in touch with her, so, and then she complained about she was trying to call us into our, our service provider for that, and now they have a central answering system down in Milwaukee. And she'd called three times to report her stuff not being picked up, and something got lost in the translation.
Mr. President, right, we'll be, that's one of the items the Streets Committee will be giving to Mike when he starts to look at a, we were, we were working without a contract at this time, and to get some quotes on that. I used to live on Levine, it is the alley, there's no doubt, so unfortunately, there was a misunderstanding. I do have a contact there, but unfortunately, I was out of town on those dates when Scott contacted me, didn't have access to it. My, at this point, and I'm not promoting advanced disposal, but that's the first problem. There may be others, but that's the first I'm aware of, and I've had none personally.
I haven't either. I will leave this with you, I've already talked to her.
You want me to get back to her?
Nope, I already did.
Oh, okay.
It's just a reminder for your discussion and your meeting, and for those of you that don't know, the previous board did, did approve the new contract. But I don't know what happened, but we ended up, it was not enforced. And so we had the bins all ready to go, and everything was electronic, or not electronic, but the farm comes out and picks them up, and evidently, it was not consummated as it was supposed to be. So, we won't need any more action, I don't think.
So, if it wasn't consummated, what can I help?
What's that? Sometimes being part of hearing is a blessing, so that's all. Anybody else got anything? If not, we will set the committee agenda. Tuesday, March 20th, 5:00 PM, Streets Infrastructure Recreation Cemetery Committee in the municipal building. Thursday, March 22nd, 5:00 PM, Public Safety in the municipal building. Tuesday, March 27th, 5:00 PM, the Plan Commission will meet. I got a question mark by municipal building, only because we may have to move it here, because there's a lot of public interest in what's going to be, and most of the Plan Commission and the PIT meeting are DMI items, I believe. And the first posting of that was, should have been in the paper today. Then also on Tuesday, March 27th, 6 o'clock, the PIT committee will meet once again, either be in municipal building or here. We will have that posted legally in plenty of time. On Thursday, April 5th, 5:00 PM, the Finance and Human Resource Committee in the municipal building, and just as a reminder, Chairman Mitchell, if there's any carryover from your discussion on the fire truck on the 22nd, if you could contact Lynn, so she can either know she's got to discuss it further, or take it off her agenda. But I would like it on both agendas, just to cover us. And then Tuesday, April 10th, at 7:00 PM, will be the Village Board meeting here in Edwards Alexander Park, and that will be the official end of the 2017-2018 Village Board Session. Then on Tuesday, April 17th, at 6:00 PM, will be the organizational meeting of the Port Edwards Village Board here at Edwards Alexander Park, and that is the official start of the 2018-2019 Village Board Session. Chairman Mitchell will be missing the April 10th meeting, and Chairman Bingham, you will be missing the April 17th meeting. So, if you're not.
Eric, I will not be here for spring break. I'm finally going on vacation, so everybody else is going on vacation, so I figured out.
Well, that's the point. Do I look for you on MTV?
Which, which are you, which are you missing, what is spring break?
The PIT down at 27th. I'm going to the villages, so it's retirement community, so ain't nothing.
I should be back for the public safety on the 22nd, but I can't guarantee it. I'm in Green Bay at 1:00. I'm supposed to have an hour hearing, but.
Do you want to just do a, do a swap between you and Eric? You take the PIT, he'll take the?
I should be back. I'll just, I'll just, just if I'm, if I'm not, it'll be in a few minutes, I can call you.
All right.
The biggest problem is, yeah, the biggest problem is, is that room has very bad technological issues, and every once in a while, things fall apart and whatever.
And Eric, you said you will miss the PIT.
Yeah, on that Tuesday, I'm on that whole week, I'm week, Friday.
Okay, we have trustee Grunden and yourself, who have volunteered to sit in on the PIT committee meeting. March 27th, 6 o'clock.
It's Thursday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Uh, no, I'm in Green Bay in the afternoon, I have a hard time getting back. So, I couldn't.
You're, John, please.
The 27th, 6 o'clock. I can do that as of, no, is that in case you, or that's for Eric? So, I should be at the March 27th meeting, I'll care. I will do that.
So, John's going to do it?
I do.
Oh, it doesn't.
You guys decide.
Well, I just want to put it on their calendar, so.
And that's, is that the one that's going to possibly be here?
Yes, that's what, we'll have that posted in plenty of time, but it's, could be a good one, because it's dealing with the DMI property.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine, I'll plan on attending that one.
Okay.
So, if, John, maybe you can stay in touch with John the week before, just to remind you. See, you're not on the Plan Commission, are you?
Oh, no.
It's you and I on the Plan Commission.
Yes.
Okay. All righty. On the April 17th meeting, I sent out that agenda well in advance to you all. Nick, I would like you just to briefly comment on what you're going to do with the, it's basically going to be a refresher. I think it's good in light of what we've got to go through from Attorney Fox's recommendations, God rest his soul, he's since passed away. Just a, it's just going to be building once again on the news and the news.
Yeah, I would expect to just remind everybody of our, the responsibilities here in session, responsibilities with respect to open meetings and open records, and questions of whether or not there are, there was a quorum for various meetings. I know that we've, I mean, since we have been, since we've completed that, that whole obviously with Mr. Fox, the compliance has been excellent, and I expect that to continue, and just hopefully more formality than anything else. And I guess, yeah, that's all I have to say about that.
Okey-dokey. I will undertake a motion for adjournment, unless somebody has a chief.
I just wanted to invite the board and all of the members of the village. Jim Mizner's retirement party will be May 9th, it's our current meeting, he doesn't want anything special, but you're all welcome to come. He wants it simple, so you guys are invited, the police department's invited, and the fire department, and our retirees, so.
What time is your home, right?
6 o'clock, we'll be eating, so.
At the station?
At the station.
Chief, other chief, chief of police, chief of the Department of Public Works, anything, Dell?
Nothing.
Okay, if I could just see you momentarily, Mr. Stewart, after the meeting. Now, I undertake a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second?
Second.